All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. We'll get this meeting called to order here. The Monday, September 12th, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. The time is 7:01. Secretary deBolt, could you please take attendance?
Schenckel.
Present.
Bishop.
Present.
Manchester.
Present.
Cox.
Present.
Present.
DeLong.
Present.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda for tonight is the approval of the agenda. I trust that everyone's had time to review that. If there's no additions or changes, I'll call for a motion to approve this agenda.
I move for the agenda to be approved.
Motion by DeLong.
This is Member Newman. I'll support.
Support by Newman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Thank you. Now is the time for citizen comments. We have no one present in the room. Do we have anyone joining online tonight?
Uh, no. No one's indicating.
Okay. We will move on to our next agenda item, the approval of the minutes. Thanks for getting those updated, sent out. Again, I trust that everyone's had time to review the minutes from the August meeting. Uh, if there's any changes, please let us know. Otherwise, I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes from August 8th.
Chair, uh, this is Member Wortella. Uh, I'm not asking for an adjustment or a change in the meeting minutes, but, uh, under member comments, it's, uh, Wortella spoke on outside people coming into the village. Uh, this was a positive comment on my part. It's, uh, it's not, uh, just people wanting to visit the village of Vicksburg for a lot of reasons. Part of it is the downtown area. It was a very positive comment, but I, uh, I support, uh, the, uh, meeting minutes, uh, as submitted.
Thanks for that additional clarification. Any other comments on the, uh, minutes from August 8th? Now I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes.
Chair Schenckel, just so the boards are aware, we'll go ahead and, and, and add that, uh, spoke on, on outside people coming into the village, uh, and we'll, we'll have it indicate, um, that it was spoken in a positive manner, that people are, who are new to, coming to the village and appreciating what's been done, I believe was Mr. Wortella's intent. So with, with that recommended change upon, upon your approval, we'll, we'll clarify that.
Great.
Holmes, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
The minutes.
I'm sorry. The, the minutes, uh, of August as, as amended.
Thank you. Motion by Holmes.
Ms. Cox, I second.
Support by Cox. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Mr. Mallory, your village manager report for this evening.
Yeah, really, it's a chance to answer any questions you might have. The DPW building, uh, is getting the power put in this week, um, which then will result in the overhead doors, which have been hung, be placed in power and, and the gas finalized. So, um, way too long, way over time. Uh, but the end is in sight and hopefully by the end of this month, uh, we have it, uh, fully operational. So that, that's the one update there. We're still waiting on, uh, um, parts for the Washington Street Lift Station that we knew in the supply chain. It's due, they're due to come in in October. So that would be the final component of the long infrastructure project. But also during that time, uh, we implemented a, a change order to put some, uh, piping in Clark Park to help with the drainage by the, uh, play structure. So hopefully that it will aid in drying that area out, uh, quicker and taking stuff to the stream. So you'll see equipment in the parks, um, during that time of, of same companies doing the lift structure, lift station, uh, as well as, as the park. And, uh, hopefully you've noticed, uh, both parks had, uh, considerable investment approved by the council, uh, in excess of $50,000. The observation deck, uh, down in Clark Park, uh, li- the gazebo across the street that, that, um, is on the pond between Appleknockers and Fickers, as well as the boardwalk at Sunset Lake Park. Uh, next Monday in front of the council, uh, we've secured bids and we'll be given a staff recommendation on, uh, putting new ground cover in, uh, under the kids' play structures, both in Clark Park and Oswalt Park to, to, um, kind of cap off, if you will, uh, the investment in those two areas. Um, and we're proceeding forward with, uh, plans for, for Village Hall. Uh, the council did approve, uh, the engineering plans to be completed to get it to the point that we can go out to bid. Uh, so you see some activity over there with, uh, ground, uh, soil sampling and different survey type stuff being done. Uh, the plan is to have, uh, those documents prepared to go to bid. Uh, hopefully by the, the third week in October, uh, with bids to be received, um, and present to the council before, I think it's the first meeting in February 23, uh, as we move forward with that project. Uh, the other is, I met last week, did a walking tour with the coordinator of the master plan. Uh, there will be in the next utility billing that goes out to all citizens, uh, a hard copy survey to fill out on the master plan that we wanted to target all of our, uh, taxpaying businesses and citizens. Anyone who receives a utility bill will get that hard copy with a message encouraging them to take time to fill it out and resubmit it with their utility, uh, bill, and we'll compile that data. There'll be, uh, multiple public meetings. We went tentatively through that schedule. I'm hoping to be in a position to announce those next Monday in multiple areas of, of the village so we can take in-person, uh, data, as well as we're right now, um, determining, uh, on the online component, uh, if we have the capabilities to separate, to make sure we can separate taxpayers versus non-taxpayers, or people who live in the, or own businesses in the village versus those who don't. We still certainly want to take everyone's opinion and input and ideas, but we want to have, uh, two different levels of that. So, so that is moving forward. Um, I would anticipate, if not October, certainly November, there'll be a more formal update given to the Planning Commission on the master plan, um, as that goes. But that for, that plans for adoption isn't until next spring. I think it's next April. The, meaning that we'd be where document, um, and the planning commission obviously will be involved in that more so in January, February, March of, uh, 2023. Um, be happy to answer. Oh, probably the last, not the last thing, but, um, October 15th, uh, plans are in the works for, uh, celebration of the 150th, uh, anniversary of the village. So that'll be a downtown event. It is on a Saturday. Uh, we hope to bring people downtown and participate in our retail shopping and the experience that they can have. So, um, but again, I'll open up to any questions.
This is Member Newman. I, just a couple of things. Uh, I, at the last meeting, you had told us about the fencing and other street shape stuff, uh, being completed downtown. Uh, I've noticed that, that's in it. That looks, uh, really nice.
Thank you.
Um, look across in front of the pharmacy and the, the short bits downtown in front of the hardware and, and, uh, Jaspers and that, that, that really, that came, came together well. Um, but my other question is, I have noticed that the, uh, ordinances are offline.
Yeah.
Uh, for searchability. I was wondering if there's an update when those would be restored, um, for public access.
Yeah, the, um, the, the, we took them, uh, made the decision to, to take them offline due to errors that were discovered on the police side of the ordinances. Uh, the short of that is, uh, those ordinances were listed as a civil infraction.
Mm-hmm.
When predominantly they're misdemeanor infractions. So, um, not to, I guess, dive in the weeds, I can, if you'd like, but the short story is, um, all of our enforcement on those ordinances, it was still valid misdemeanors. We just didn't want confusion to be online. So we recontacted the original company, uh, that led that effort and that codification. I approved the contract, I think it was, um, about $2,600 to, to redo that, which is the online component as well. They, that was done last Tuesday. At that time, they felt it would be corrected in four to six weeks.
Okay.
So that's where we're at with, with it being online and searchable.
Very, thank you very much.
Yes. I did, um, before more questions, one thing I did want, um, to let the Planning Commission know. Uh, the, uh, village, uh, you might have been aware about six weeks ago, maybe more. Uh, we were, uh, we had put in back in 2020 and again in 2021 under the, um, EDA and the federal government for a, a specific project involving critical needs of our infrastructure system, which are basically from our last lift station, along Sprinkle Road till it connects to the city of Portage. Uh, through that process, uh, very, it's about an $11 million project that we did receive grant funding of $3.7 million out of the EDA. Um, so that was, uh, put Vicksburg, um, uh, there was a total of $500 million in that process throughout the United States, and to be able to receive $3.7 million is pretty fortunate, um, in comparison to municipalities our size especially. Uh, but even more happy, uh, to report is on last Tuesday night, we had gone through a grant process, uh, requesting $1.2 million through Kalamazoo County ARPA funds. Um, and that was a process in which met with, with county staff and, and subcommittees representing, uh, the commission and ultimately received unanimous support from Kalamazoo Commission, Ca- Kalamazoo County Commission. Um, that we were awarded that $1.2 million. That's specific for lead line replacements in the area of, uh, town, um, that would, uh, is north of the middle school, which a lot of those water mains are four-inch water mains going back to the 30s. So that's pretty significant. We anticipate between, uh, 72 and 85 homes will be taken off that galvanized portions of the system and, and fully updated, and there'll be eight-inch water mains, um, in that area. That's a, that will be a, a 2024, uh, turn dirt project as well as the, uh, uh, sanitary sewer. Um, will be, um, given two options, 24, 25 bidding cycle due to, due to lead times. Um, and then, uh, the Drain Commissioner gets, gets credit, um, identified needs of the dam here, here in Vicksburg. Uh, we sent a letter of support, made some calls, uh, certainly in support of those updates. And out of the Drain Commissioner's request, that was the one that the County Commission approved, and that it'll be, uh, $2.5 million worth of updates to, to the Vicksburg Dam. So, um, that money, uh, is money that ultimately the village of Vicksburg, uh, gets this, you know, uh, reaps the benefit of. So, so those are some pretty decent, uh, announcements. We'll go into more detail next Monday in front of the council, but be happy to answer any questions that I can.
I have a question, um, uh, oh, sorry. I have a question about the gas lines.
Sure.
What's going on with the gas lines?
There, uh, the village just started, um, the year before the infrastructure project. It's, uh, AEP lead and it's, uh, doubling the size. I think they're going from one inch to two-inch gas mains throughout the village, so more efficiency to take us into the future. It's kind of, um, when we announced the infrastructure project, there's, uh, electronic communication that goes out to all utility providers. So as well that took notice was, um, the power grid in Vicksburg, um, is in its third of, I think, a four-year program to make sure that the village will not lose power across the village limits. It's now quadrant out, or at least three-fourths of the way through that. So, um, that's the other utility big project update to Vicksburg. And, uh, a lot of, it's, it's to find the mechanism to communicate in the detail to our citizens of how Vicksburg is being noticed in government circles. Um, we struggled to, to figure out the best way to do that because a lot of these plans are, are piggybacking on each other in putting Vicksburg in a position, uh, to, to more than survive, but be in a leadership role uh, for a municipality our size over the next, uh, 20 to 40 years for sure. So.
I think that, that talking about that here is a great way to do that.
Yeah, and I, I think, I'm trying to communicate more information to where appropriate through email or posting. Alex does a great job on, on Facebook and, and if you know anyone, I mean, we plug in, we now have a system where we plug in their emails and every update we send out, doesn't matter if it's social media or an e- you know, it, it automatically is generated for communication. We knew, um, we've heard comments and, and they're accurate. I mean, we're an aging community where sidewalks, um, can be approved. Um, we try not. There's an ordinance that places that responsibility cost-wise on, on the property owner. That's, that's, um, uh, you know, we usually have the easement, but you don't want to saddle our, our citizens or burden them with that. But we knew the, the gas lines and a lot of those would be under the sidewalks. And I know one block in particular, I met with them and explained that, you know, we just have to be patient in two years as we're going to get new gas lines. And lo and behold, when it happens, those come with sections or in this case, an entire block of new sidewalk. So once all that project's done, um, we, we are in the process of obtaining bids in where we know the gas lines aren't hitting sidewalks to, to try to, uh, commit $20,000 to $25,000 to a sidewalk program each year over the next, uh, five years in the capital plan to bring people walkable downtown. So I know one question gets a lot of answers, but it gets my mind thinking how they all intertwine. Um, and that's a lot of that'll communication between different infrastructure entities. So.
Jim, do you know what the timeframe is on that for completion of the gas lines? And if they're planning on doing, fixing the sidewalks this year yet that they've tore up?
Supposed to be all completed this fall.
Okay. Great.
So.
Uh, this is Member Wortella. Jim, can you speak in general terms about this sewer along Sprinkle Road? Is that, um, being planned or reviewed, or is there a tentative start date? Uh, is Vicksburg going to cover, uh, part of it along with other communities? And it's going to go up to reach into the city of Portage. Is that correct?
Well, correct, because we have to connect to the city of, uh, Portage's system to ultimately get to the city of Kalamazoo where, where, um, it's processed. That started the, um, in, really started in 2015 and 16 and the SAW grant on the analysis of the Vicksburg system, which is, yeah, 120 to 150 million dollars of assets, had, uh, $31 million of critical repairs that were needed. Uh, so that was a component that we knew, um, s- some, a majority maybe, at least of that pipe goes back to the 70s. And with the, uh, growth of the village, um, we looked at that. So it became, uh, more formal in 2018. We really started, uh, um, at that time, uh, we did a design work to that last lift station and the force main. It's a force main that would get us up. Uh, met with Portage, the city of Kalamazoo, uh, very, um, smooth, if you will. Within six, eight weeks, we had updated 40-year agreements with, with the city of Portage and city of Kalamazoo. Um, the system would move to Zeilman, which has a larger sewer interceptor. Uh, and that's how it's designed. And we went to USDA funding, um, which was funding for the entire, uh, uh, components of it to get, to get an idea where we were at or if we were eligible from the USDA standpoint. Um, what happened is, because it was a part of this project that went, uh, here, here a year ago, is other communities made decisions that weren't, uh, going to participate in this. Um, so then we, and that, that, that's fine and, and in some aspects, uh, you know, now Vicksburg will have a force main and be responsible for that force main and, and benefit from it. Uh, and that's, uh, the process now is, uh, we got this, secured this money from the EDA. Uh, we will submit the standalone engineering plans and, um, funding, gap funding, uh, to the USDA in an attempt to secure a 40-year, um, grant loan. I don't anticipate getting grant money from the USDA on this, but we're well, uh, positioned, uh, otherwise. So here in the next couple of months, we'll have meetings with our bonding attorneys and, and move that project forward. Ultimately, I anticipate going to council, um, sometime in the spring of '23 for approval to go out to bid. Um, secure bids by the fall of '23 and give companies the option to start the project, um, in whatever construction season is best for them, trying to get the best, best bid pricing back. So.
I don't know if you can speak to it now, but is there any anticipation that other governmental, uh, entities might hook into that sewer line?
They're not going to be able to hook into that sewer line. It's a force main.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Further questions for the village manager on the report? Okay. Uh, it looks like we have, uh, officer nominations and, Jim, we've done this a few different ti- or different ways. And so help me if, remember how we handle these, uh, nominations again.
Um, would we take nominations for, for those four positions and then vote on them at the next meeting?
Apparently I lost power. Oh, there we go. Okay. Uh, do you want us to write those on a piece of paper, or is that just kind of okay to mention over the?
What, what we did, um, I believe the last two times I participated in this was the nominations were done verbally because it's just, I nominate so-and-so in a second. And then, um, we'll create, for lack of a, a ballot, um, and then put that to each of you at the next meeting and then you'll circle them and we'll draw, draw that out and see.
Great.
Where the votes tally.
Perfect. Thank you. So just for the commission, um, we'll go position by position. And if you feel like you are somebody that you would like to nominate, please go ahead and submit that verbally. We'll start with, uh, secretary. So.
I would like to nominate, uh, Bill Cox for the secretary.
This is Member Wortella. I second that.
I've actually seen Bill's handwriting, so I would, uh, Holmes, I would like to nominate, uh, Mr. DeBolt.
So we have, we currently have Member Cox and Member DeBolt as nominations for secretary. Do we have any others? Okay. Uh, treasurer.
I'll second that.
I was just wondering if Mr. Newman or Mr. Manchester noticed when he said, "I'm nominating for secretary," Tanya elbowed him, like making sure it wasn't her.
That's a long way to that end.
Yeah.
Okay, moving to treasurer. Nominations for treasurer. Jim, maybe, um, you can just provide a little context behind this position, uh?
Yeah, on both the secretary, I mean, we're, we're, we've handled it with Mr. DeBolt that he handles like the in-meeting secretary duties and then we have staff, our, now that we have a full-time village clerk, um, and we dual-record these meetings, um, so they self-back up each other. The clerk provides all the written materials, um, on the secretary position. And the treasurer's position, um, the internal workings of that are, uh, Michelle Morgan, the village treasurer and myself, um, handle all the budgeting of the village, so. You know, we give the, give a report and what, what's needed in those areas. But we have to follow the bylaws and ordinances and, and in the same fashion, we need, uh, Mr. Holmes was uh, part of the financial committee on the council. I think he was the treasurer and he receives as a, a member of the financial committee, our monthly bank recs and confirming that they're in order and, and then all of that. So, that's how we handled that, but.
This is member DeBolt. I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Holmes for the treasurer position again.
A second.
Any more nominations for treasurer? Okay, uh, vice chair. Nominations for vice chair.
This is member Wirtella. I would like to nominate Chris Newman as, uh, the vice chair.
This is member Manchester. I'd like to second that.
Mr. Mallory, who is currently vice chair? Kyle was, okay, that's weird.
Any further nominations for vice chair? Okay, lastly, for chair.
Uh, trustee Holmes, I would like to nominate Ms. Tanya for the position. Honey, I just want to hear your voice every day, so.
This is Chair Schenkel. I'll support that.
This is, uh, Manchester. I'd like to nominate Matt Schenkel.
I'd support that.
One component of the nominations as well is the person accepts being nominated. So, yeah, we can do that at the end if you want.
They didn't speak up, so. Any further nominations for chair? All right, let's go through and, um, confirm, uh, acceptance of nominations. So, for secretary, we have John DeBolt and Bill Cox. Do you both accept those nominations at this time?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. For treasurer, Mr. Holmes?
I do.
Thank you. For vice chair, Mr. Newman?
I do.
And for chair, Ms. DeLong? Ladies first.
I do.
And I accept the nomination for chair as well. Okay, so next, next month, we'll have, um, some sort of voting piece for, for these positions. Um, thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda here is the DDA and we have DDA finances presented by village manager Mallory.
Yeah, the D, we, we have had, um, very little expenditures, uh, so far this year. It's been, um, most of it was, uh, completed before year, year's end. There are, um, I anticipate as we move into the third quarter, um, after the first of the year, we're, we're taking input. I, I see some and it's budgeted money that we have, but some additional, probably four additional tables that will match the tables we purchased in the downtown area, two going in Oswalt Park and, and two in another area of the sidewalk. We've really seen the kind of you build it, people come and hang out. Um, I don't know if you've had the opportunity, go by the park at, uh, Oswalt Park, that is, very pleasantly pleased on, on the use of that park as well as, um, the economic impact having the placemaking downtowns having, so if anything, I, I see that, uh, coming in December. It all depends on the supply chain of the, that vendor will honor the, the price that we received and, and see how the timing is, because I think it's important to keep that same look downtown, so. But everything's going well. Big thing on it, well, is grant application process. But I can answer any questions.
Just one question for you, Jim. All the fencing downtown that was put up, that was paid from through the DDA, correct?
Not all of it. The, uh, Main Street was. The fencing in front of, uh, the, the, um, Lake Living Store and Fred's Pharmacy and the one down, the smaller one down by the Dollar General were under the original, um, design. We added the, the fencing that's on Main Street. Correct. Yeah, that, and that will be, uh, DDA funds that was approved, I think, in within the last budget cycle, so.
Any further questions on DDA finances before grant application process? All right, Mr. Mallory?
Um, before you, we, our goal was, uh, to have this in, on paper form to you and, uh, we, we distributed it out, um, last week. But all of the, um, pillars of the grant program that, that was kind of vetted out through the fiscal year budget process are intact. So, total dollar amount is thirty-six thousand dollars, um, twelve of that through a Vicksburg Foundation grant. And the rest, uh, through, uh, governmental financing. The, um, levels of grants stayed at, at wh- what was presented to both this body and the council with one grant being fifteen thousand, two grants being seventy-five hundred. Those are, uh, up to fifty percent match. So, to, uh, on round numbers of, we would take at least a thirty thousand dollar investment for the fifteen thousand dollar grant. Uh, the motivation behind those levels of money is to incentivize people to invest in their downtown businesses or buildings in which will, uh, have, um, not only a public benefit, but an economic impact, um, which, which, uh, is part of the grant process. And then we would have, uh, two three thousand dollar grant opportunities as well. If someone, um, there was no investment that met the public benefit or the other parameters of the grant at thirty thousand dollars or more, um, there is the opportunity that, you know, the, the committee could recommend lesser amounts and, and more grants. So, I'll, uh, I think I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to this program. I think once people see that the opportunities, we've seen what downtown's done. We did, the other is because we look back, so it goes back, projects that were completed after July first, twenty-twenty-one. So, there are projects that have been completed a bit ago, but they're still eligible for this grant dollars.
Jim, I was just going to ask, um, I'm not sure if you said, but when is the deadline or is there a deadline?
What, what did I, what we've sketched in is the timeline will be, uh, oh, we're presenting it for, for approval, uh, from the planning commission tonight. And, uh, next Monday, I'll be in front of the council, which I think that's September nineteenth. And the twentieth, um, Alex and I will be hand-delivering, if, if it's approved, hand-delivering grant applications to all DDA business owners um, or building owners, um, to ensure, I'll send out on our downtown email list that we have, uh, the fact that it remains, but we're going to make personal contact with people in the DDA district. Uh, we're going to give them a thirty-day, I believe turnaround time, so they have to submit the grant, or it might be twenty-one days. And then we'll hit the next planning, will, within that timeframe, the, uh, committee, which is the village attorney, village manager, village council president, chairperson of the planning commission and, and a fifth ad hoc member will meet to ensure that the legalities and it meets a public benefit and provide our recommendations to this body first uh, for approval and then ultimately the council for the expense of those. So, I, I envision, um, that in November, the grants would be awarded.
Mr. Mallory, I did have a, a, a quick question and reading through this and I had gone back through, uh, back to the executive summary from June about the potential for this program, uh, I was wondering when the decision was made for this to be a fifty-fifty matching grant? Uh, you know, to, to, to do that, to make that money available, um, because I was looking back through the executive summary from June and the, uh, and, and my meeting notes from since then, that, that fifty-fifty, you know, that, that matching amount uh, had not been discussed until I saw that in the upcoming paperwork. Uh, I know that there had been a, a percentage, the prior grant, the facade grants were based on a percentage of completed project and I believe was you could use the grant money for up to sixty percent of your project. I know that ten percent's not a, a huge deal, but, um, you know, uh, you, you, how many people are going to have a thirty thousand dollar public use or public improvement projects on their buildings? I was just kind of curious how that, uh, how that decision came about.
Just because that standard, uh, what, we pulled off a couple of their grant opportunities through DDAs, through the attorney's office, so that's where the, the level staff's recommending.
Okay, I, I, I just, like I said, I had not seen any mention or how that was going to pan out. I was curious about how that, uh, that metric came to be inserted into, into the application process.
Yeah, I, I, I'm hoping we, none of us, um, you know, are certain, I guess, of the future, but I'm hoping the trend continues. We've had multiple businesses um, in our downtown DDA area, uh, invest over the thirty thousand dollar mark in the last, um, three years. Probably at least five. I don't know if all of those projects would meet the legislative definition of public benefit. But it, so I'm hoping it incentivizes people to, to, to make those type of investments. I think we have to be careful, um, in, in the communication, we'll have to coach and educate people as they, they contact us to submit for the grant. This isn't like the past. I mean, you're, you're, the people advising the governmental bodies that will ultimately decide that are looking at this from a legal and legislative viewpoint. If, you know, at this level of money to make sure it meets that public benefit, which sometimes, you know, pub- it's the public benefit that, that we can definitely, um, connect to economic impact, positive impact on the downtown, so.
Thank you.
Chris, just to ver- to, uh, confirm what you said, the old grant was up to eighty percent of the, of the project, up to twenty-five hundred dollars reimbursement. So, if it went thirty-four hundred dollars, then you were eligible for a twenty-five hundred dollar grant. But it wa- it covered eighty percent of the grant. So, if you only spent, if you did a two thousand dollar job, you got eighty percent of the two thousand dollars. Even smaller jobs of four hundred dollars. It was eighty percent of that, so. We just tried to do it until the money was gone or used up, so we had some, one year we had fifteen, eighteen grants. You know, the first time we did it. So, but it was, put that there. Me being a business owner, I am happy to, for this village to do a fifty-fifty grant on something of that, so.
No, it's, it's, it's a significant investment, uh, you know, of, of public funds into businesses downtown. That's, I, I, I think, uh, I, I, I'm happy with the, uh, with the direction of taking for retooling the grant program. I was just looking for clarification as to when, uh, when that change in percentage, uh, of, of match percentage, uh, had been determined. Um, just kind of trying to follow the timeline, uh, as, you know, we get this here and then a month later, we see this and I was just trying to, uh, to follow along where that was. I, 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 you know, and have been in the past to voice my support for the retooling of the grant program, uh, making those public dollars available for more than just the facade of the building because, well, we're running out of fronts of buildings to dress up. Um, there are things, I, I feel that we as the, as the DDA, uh, can do to continue to enhance, uh, you know, the viability of downtown and the, uh, the ability for, uh, residents and patrons, uh, you know, patrons of the businesses downtown to make their experience better, so they will continue to return. Uh, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of this, uh, you know, this retool program to see what projects people will bring to the table. I'm really curious to see what, you know, what, what comes next.
One of the benefits to it is, uh, the cost of renovations has tripled in the last three years, okay? So, that's why I think everybody's very happy that this village offers this project or this program.
There's one other thing that I would like to suggest and maybe you've already thought about it. When you and Alex take the grant program packets to the business owners, could you include the repaint program too? Because?
It doesn't get used.
Yeah, it doesn't get used.
We can. I just need to make sure that that was part of the budget process and, and approved to do.
Still in the DDA budget, I think. But you would know.
I, we will certainly do that if I can confirm.
There's a thousand dollars allocated for that, so.
I will certainly do that once I confirm that was approved by the council and the DDA.
Any other questions for village manager on the grant application process? We have, it looks like we have an action item, Jim?
Yes, I'm looking for, uh, um, a motion and support, uh, from this body that approves this process. I did speak to Tanya earlier. There are a couple grammar non-structure. There's nothing that impacts a structure. I have a final meeting with Andrew that that, those couple, uh, suggestions will get changed, but a motion and support to approve this grant and. but a motion and support to approve this grant and the grant application moving for, forward and then ultimately it'll go in front of the council, uh, next Monday.
I'd like to propose that the property improvement grant program be submitted to the council for approval.
Holmes, I second.
Any further questions or comments before we vote? This is money roll call?
Yeah, roll call would be.
Schenkel?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Newman?
Yes.
Manchester?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Wortella?
Yes.
DeLong?
Yes.
DeBolt, yes.
Great. Okay, on to member comments. Any comments from, from this body?
Mr. Mallory, uh, I was approached by Mike Wessels of The Wooden Stitch, just, uh, today actually, about this grant program.
Yeah, I talked to him, uh, last week.
Okay. So. Who, if it comes up again, who would be the point of contact?
I would be.
With questions about this specifically?
I'd be, be, you can give anyone my cell number.
Thank you.
I wasn't here last month, so Zach, welcome to the planning commission. Thanks for coming on board here with us. I do want to say congratulations to Jim and his team on the grants. Um, if, if you don't have much experience with grant writing and, uh, going through that process, that's a lot of work and that's a lot of time. And so to have Jim synopsize what is happening and what's coming, uh, doesn't show at all the accuracy of what work went into that. So I want to say a very, uh, warm thank you for all the work that you and the team did to get this village that amount of money. That is a, an enormous amount of money that will help significantly and, as you kind of put it, continue to put us on a trajectory for leadership for municipalities of our size for the future, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll support that.
I support that as well. I think our community needs to realize exactly how much you do for, um, our growth and, and our benefit.
Time is now seven fifty and I will adjourn this meeting. Have a great night, everyone.